You know.
You see my name?
I'll see.
Me and Tom, there's no difference.
I'd love to see.
Hi, John.
Hello.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's.
Did you do that in 2025?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Too little space.
We get it out here. Yeah, the building were, I'm most concerned, sixty-four, sixty-two.
Yeah.
Those buildings were hard enough that we just got lucky to say Paul. Showed up when they did, at least take all of it.
Really give them trouble.
Yeah, and now, I guess this year is the last year difference.
Yeah.
And then, as new owner, they pay.
It's funny, it's a chip, John.
No, I just go to your, your, it does not. Her brother five, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
So it was a lot of stuff going.
Yeah.
And all the simple structure, data center, all this stuff.
Not those four, five, eight. Don't care if they're buried down, you know, down there on the seventies, which is not very.
These are all the dogs.
At first building was built seventy-one, seven-two, and then the second one was bigger. They're both built for conceal. I think. I remember I had that, and I had it much with Haley. And.
Yeah.
The day they met, plus your team over there.
Oh, yeah.
And they just said, he, he, they were just, he got tired of it. Six weeks later.
About that.
Have you heard, do you know Ward Green?
What's his name?
Work on the, been around a long time. He was doing this call, but he called it a state farm office.
Okay.
He had a great relationship with the guy that joined last, like, oh, he wanted to do this big deal. And he didn't, he had just listened during the conference. I've never been to him. Newspaper blog called on, said they had this giant deal in court.
Of course, that's a mess. Wow, that's crazy.
Yeah, he's having him down all of that, hey, whatever look, maybe.
Yeah, something like that.
I was at this meeting last week, the fellow was, they're talking all about. One of the, getting up. Something to me.
No, no, we talked all of it.
Okay, okay. Hi, so you showed us where the doors are. Um, and so, of course, the question came out, okay, this class, these be, be whatever you want to call it. And then, everybody thinks that.
Hmm.
It's just not.
No.
It's just, it's just every individual building has a tour.
Totally.
And, and some can happen, something can happen with public subsidy, something can have a wrong, it's possible. And who's gonna take the hit? Who's gonna, and that's the bird question, who's, if they haven't already, who's gonna do that in the pool? But we're just having, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Who's gonna take that hit?
Okay.
And it's not, the person takes the hit, and that's, and you're gonna take the up.
Yes.
So. If they can, they can extend it for ten, which is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just want them to.
Oh, no.
We. Like, one building, if, if a resident, if, if you go back or.
I have been in places, they pay for it.
They're talking about if they threw the key down.
They should be.
They threw the keys for rent.
Or, or, sold it, watching private play. I don't know, they, just by their.
Had a big right there, or, yeah.
They did, they used to get their, you know, that order, but said it. So I understand.
He's flying her.
By this quick, and they got it, they're just like, no.
That's crazy.
So they.
They have a question.
I was higher. There's more of a bad job, and.
Four hundred years ago, thirty-five, forty-five, forty-five, forty-six.
But you know it. So.
Or, I'm gonna say.
No doubt that that is, no, that would, that would, nothing could ever anywhere.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that.
I didn't.
Very well paid. They see, they, they, you know, they, you know, they didn't pay it, they, yeah, yeah. Simple office, where they're like, what, I, sometimes, I, okay, that good.
I don't wait those.
It didn't.
I was looking. You might hear that I need something.
You know.
It's better than whether it's a toothbrush.
Always some paranoia that people delete what I put up there.
Exactly.
And I thought, where is it? Where is it? You're focusing, and I'm annoying you.
Yeah.
I'm not going there, but it's always like, what do you want?
Oh, yeah. And. All that. Yeah, yeah, it is.
Reading my side, my side of the press, I mean.
Yeah.
Spring screen.
Well, you finished in twenty-four.
So they told you what, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, oh.
What I like is what they have, which, but what happened two, two years down. Yeah, but that's, there's a money. Yeah.
You don't, don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, can actually get saved.
That's all. Um.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, I don't know.
Even here, what, this, this, like, now we get off to good, I mean, same, you know.
You don't know.
You know, usually, you see the inner, the, the. And, 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 and.
In in the third quarter of two thousand and twenty, we were in full covid panic. And everybody was getting rid of office space as fast as they could. But the interesting thing about this is before the recession talk all started in the media. Look at uh uh Q one of two thousand and twenty, two from the right. Office had recovered. There was absorption happening again, positive net absorption uh came back low of a hole. See here, so. Uh there you go, thank you. So in this one, you can see the key observations. U S what we call prime office space, and we're going to focus a lot on that. That is the class A, the best you can get kind of office space. And America has registered over a hundred million square feet of positive absorption since two thousand and twenty. So the best is getting better. And the vacancy rate ranges between twelve and twenty five percent. I was talking to a landlord in New York last Thursday. They said, we can't build enough of the newest office space quickly enough. And rental rates are off the chart for the newest stuff. The newest buildings uh feature less than ten percent rental rates and prime rental rates have fully recovered. We did a study and we're presenting some of this information to you today. Of about five billion square feet of office space uh around America. And we came up with some conclusions. And this is the the title of the presentation, obsolescence equals opportunity. And so first of all, we got to gauge demand from the tenants. How much office are we really going to need going forward? Uh we need to look at the supply. We'll talk a lot in this presentation about the differences of supply that you have in this city and that imbalance. And then what are the opportunities for the future? So on the top, we can uh we'll also talk a a little bit more about what occupier trends are. But in short, people want to go to a place where they can convene. Uh where they can enjoy the experience. We say they have this turn, you have to earn the commute to get people to come back in. It can't be the same old office space over and over again. And the second bullet point, we see a real crisis in American uh office real estate with three hundred and thirty million square feet of excess office space coming. So the older obsolete product is in real trouble, it just doesn't know it yet. And there's a, there is an interesting concentration of vacancy. Buildings uh facing greater than fifty percent vacancy comprised less than seven percent of buildings. So all buildings aren't impacted. On the bottom, you can see the outcome is what we call a triuppercated environment, starting at the top. The newest office buildings comprise only fifteen percent of the market today. But have sign, as I've said, significant demand and significant price increases. The middle, which is most of the office product in America, consisting of sixty percent of the stock is what I would call yellow light. Green light on the top, yellow light and clearly red line on the bottom. Twenty twenty five percent to twenty five percent of the office stock, which is older, is in real trouble. On this graph, which you can see is some data to support that. Uh in red, you can see what was occupied office space in the in the fourth quarter of two thousand and nineteen. Compared to current compared to two thousand and thirty. But the black along the top is what I'm interested in. In two thousand and nineteen before, right before covid, in America, we had six hundred and ninety nine thousand square feet of vacant office space. Today, it's a billion six. And I want to say only, I mean, it's, that's a lot of office space. But compared to what you might have read in the media, a lot of off, the office space is still occupied and under lease. But look, on the right hand side, uh natural vacancy in twenty thirty would have been seven hundred and thirty nine million feet. But we believe there's going to be another three hundred and thirty million square feet of vacancy coming. Here you can look up net absorption since two thousand and twenty. And look at on the left hand side, under that red, a hundred and five million square feet, um as I mentioned earlier. So let's describe that for you. Less than eight years old. E S G friendly, terrific, high quality amenities, which Aileen is going to talk about. Class A location in a very vibrant neighborhood. And then you look on the right, you can see the red, that same kind of a product only accounts for fifteen percent of um the class A office inventory, but a lot of leasing.
Thanks, Ken. So just kind of digging into Atlanta more specifically and what we're seeing as like these vibrant nodes where success is happening. So um we've tracked, you know, different places, fi, four cities in aggregate here, Atlanta, Chicago, New York and San Francisco. And really seeing kind of unique visits, pre pandemic levels in vibrant U S neighborhoods. Um and if you look to the, to the right, so the vibrant neighborhoods are clearly the ones that are winning from a successful office environment. Not only kind of what we were experiencing pre pandemic where um folks needed to recruit and retain the best and brightest talent. Now they're having to really entice their employees to get back to the office, to engage with the workforce. And they're using those vibrant nodes as a tool. So you know, you're seeing on the right, more specifically, some locations in Atlanta, whether it be perimeter summit, interlock, colony square, the battery, pond city market and Avalon. And those vibrant nodes, some are, you know, exceeding expectations from the panda, pre pandemic levels. And some may be faltering for, you know, specifically perimeter summit has, you know, a lot of vacancy from a huge cock sublease. And less um restaurants, that would be kind of creating a more vibrant node. Lynn, did you have a question?
Just perimeter summits in Brickhaven, right? It's inside the perimeter. I just wanted to make sure that we were talking specifics here, not. Like you mean Galleria and Battery, you don't mean something three blocks away from that area, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and the same thing is true perimeter summit, you mean Brickhaven, part of the perimeter, not outside the perimeter, right?
No, inside the perimeter, specifically at those office buildings, one thousand one to four thousand four.
Thank you.
We we state as well, so go back, you're saying that's one property, that's not the perimeter region.
That's not the perimeter region, it's a specific node of properties.
Real micro. What's interlock? I don't know where that is.
Interlock is a development at fourteenth and Hal Mill. So it's another location in West Midtown, which would be kind of a vibrant node.
Is that where the old Atlantic, Atlantic station? No, no.
It's fourteenth, it's where Putt Shack is and Bell Yard Hotel and across from White Provisions. And this kind of is another, just more iterating, more on um the foot traffic we're seeing in vibrant nodes. And these, at the end of the day, we're just kind of promoting that these are the locations that we're seeing the most successful office leasing happening for all the reasons that, you know, we see. People are choosing to use their own time and their own money to go there when they're not going to work. So those are the locations where occupiers are choosing to locate and sign leases in an effort to kind of extend that interest from the employee base into the office. And just some highlights there, you'll see uh the battery, pond city market, just and again, you're seeing the desirability of not a nine to five location, but more an eighteen hour location where it's something people, you can get your clients or your employees to meet you for coffee, lunch, dinner, drink. Um some kind of experience beyond the office. So again, creating a playful atmosphere where tenants want to be. Um I've been, you know, very involved in campus two forty four, and that's exactly what the success there is spawned off of, is creating that place. And then specifically, we'll go into the central perimeter office market.
Yes, and and Mayor, to answer your question, if you look on the right hand side and you look in the center, I wish I could point, but there's a little green area just below four hundred. So that's what uh the real estate types call central perimeter. And on the left hand side is that area blown up. And just to tell you two things that I think are interesting about central perimeter, first of all, it's our largest office submarket. And it's, it's well liked by real estate professionals for a variety of reasons. But two of the most important, there are a lot of different labor sheds that are near central perimeter. You can get there from, or you can get here from there. And secondly, we forgot when we built Atlanta east west, but we have two eighty five to help us with that here. So this is one of the best and most accessible quarters of office. And you got Marta and and and, so it is a well regarded office submarket.
Three cities, but you do have the three cities comprised.
Yes, comprised of three cities. So we're going to focus on Dunwoody in just a second, but looking at this three city submarket, just to give you a flavor, it's uh twenty five million square feet. Uh very light leasing, a hundred and ninety six thousand square feet uh in the first quarter, that's one percent. Vacancy is a twenty four percent, which is pretty consistent with the overall U S vacancy, San Francisco, which pre pandemic was less than one percent. Uh over the weekend announced that their vacancy is now thirty percent, just for perspective. You can see the rental rates that we're asking. The inventory is aging, and that's the big theme of today's presentation. If you look at the inventory on the far right, buildings built since two thousand and ten comprised of only three point six million square feet. And then, of course, look at the big graph between nineteen eighty and nineteen eighty nine, when I was in high school and I had black hair. That's when most of those buildings were built. Now focusing on Dunwoody itself, we didn't put a map in here, we figured he knew where Dunwoody was. So that's eight point three million square feet um out of the central perimeter uh area. And it's eighty six point nine percent as a percent of total class A occupancy. And then you could see the vacancy at twenty three percent in the city. Anything else you want to say about that?
Yep.
Okay. So uh another way of looking at the age of buildings of the submarket. Uh this is actually looking at lease expirations based on the year built. And the, and the dark blue are the buildings uh that were built from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty nine. And those are the leases that are expiring in those buildings during those years. So the exposure to the city is not only that we have older buildings, but we have significant lease expirations in those older buildings. Look in two thousand and twenty three, seven hundred thousand square feet, plus or minus, six hundred of it is in the eighty to eighty nine timeframe. And it kind of moderates over, and then we have another big wall of lease expirations in two thousand and thirty one. So uh this talks about the major buildings in the submarket, you want to talk about those?
Sure. Um clearly, the newest have the, you know, most success in their leasing efforts with twelve twenty four, having a great success with Insight Global. That, you know, did an original lease and then grew to take the entire building down. Um State Farm, obviously, there's some movement on that. But again, you have three very beautiful, brand new buildings there. North and South terraces adjacent here has a fair amount of space available. As you can see, their vacancy rate is kind of climbing up to the fifty percent mark. And just for kind of an understanding, when a bank normally says they're stabilized in a real estate, it would be eighty five to ninety percent leased would be a stable building that would be covering debt service without a problem. Um seventy, uh seven thousand Central Park and then Ravinia one, two and three. And then this is just kind of, we're going through the stock that of the office that's currently in Dunwoody. So you're probably all familiar, but you have Crown Point Tower, those are two buildings, ten forty and ten fifty. The perimeter center buildings. And then just kind of look there on the vacancy rate that's currently existing today. And the rollover and the risk that we discussed with the um rolling leases in the coming years. Kind of the same thing, this would be class, I mean, class B properties.
I have a couple of questions real quick. So with something like the Goldkist, which was built in the nineteen seventies, like, when does that? And then it's trans, transitioned to campus tw- two forty four, are we considering that a nineteen seventies building or are we considering that?
That would be, when it delivers, it will be, the, it'll be a twenty twenty four delivery.
So then when we're looking at the eighties buildings, do you take into account like full scale renovations? Or it's just because it's built in nineteen eighty five, it is built in nineteen eighty five?
So in CoStar, which most of the commercial real estate teams utilize, they will know any massive repositioning or renovation that's been used. And that, and really, the market kind of controls how it looks, how it appears, how it, how the occupant feels when they tour it. So it kind of all gets communicated through the improvements they've made. But yes, for the study here, it was the year it was delivered.
And I, yeah, thank you. And and just to further uh build on that, I think the only way a building gets kind of youthful again is if it's really taken all the way down to the bare bones, just because they put in new carpet, new paint, new furniture. Sorry, it doesn't qualify as, as, as reborn.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say reposition, some of the, I mean, pot city market would still be in the new category, even though it's one of the oldest buildings in Atlanta. Um so moving on to what occupiers want.
And that's, that's your quote, Aileen.
Yeah, that's the quote Mark Torre always uses.
Yeah, so I'll quote Aileen, it's not about the space, it's about the place. And so what that means is it's not about the demise premises being inside, it's about the location in which you arrive in. It's bigger than just the building, it's the community. And uh I call this uh the clubhouse phenomenon. Um you know, in in the dark days of uh covid, we rethought office before uh covid came. You know, we were trying to get density with dignity, more people and less space. We were trying to cram them in. And now people will work in multiple locations in the best spaces, that clubhouse effect. So I might spend some time at a desk, but then I might go to a meeting area and then I might go to an area much like a a commercial Sky Club and and operate there. Uh the strong presence of uh amenities, uh the fitness center and outdoor activities, uh and the gathering spots are all important. Um recently, I was in San Jose and toured uh some of those buildings, they take their food very seriously as they do their walkability. I was telling uh Michael Sterling just before this, we don't in Atlanta have a beach, but we do have a Belt Line. And that's a very attractive thing to tenants, the ability to get out on a pretty day like today and walk around, ride around. And so we've begun to rethink the purpose of the office. We no longer need an office to store pieces of paper, that's all digital. We really no longer need an office for heads down productivity, although that is acceptable. What we really need an office for is a place to convene, to build culture and to transfer knowledge and have access to specialized tool. For example, if you need three D printing, I don't know about you, but I don't have that at my house. So if there's some specialized need that you have, and then, as you can see on the bottom, the ability for senior leadership to build a connection to their company. And that's what a lot of senior leaders have missed, is the ability for them to really uh have their vision understood and to connect. And what a lot of young people are missing, and there's a lot of data to support this, they can't connect to the company, they're lonely, they're unhealthy. And there's a lot of psychological problems if everybody in the world worked at home all alone, that's just not going to happen, I hope, ever again.
Sure, so we're seeing a lot of real estate reduction, I would say, across the board. People are really taking a look at how often people are utilizing their space, how much space everyone needs individually. If they're going to continue a flexible work uh program, what people are willing to give up for that. And we're seeing everything from twenty percent reduction all the way to fifty percent reduction from total rentable square footage. And that is also kind of spurring on um some of the desirability of the best in class office, because they are reducing their overall footprint by potentially fifty percent. They're not pocketing all those savings, they're kind of looking for the better opportunity, the better building, the better, the newer, nicer option. Um clearly, design needs to be flexible and adaptable, everyone's future focused and trying to imagine what's going to be five years or ten years down the road, because it is a long lease term that most people are signing and how their space is going to be able to grow with them. Again, uh Ken mentioned culture, you know, having access to the decision makers in any company are really important. And being able to feel connected in that way is a focus of many of the C suite. And then experience, you can't, like, everyone's talking experience and being able, having that experience culture and then active design.
Yeah, I have a term for access to the uh decision makers phone app for young people, it's fear of missing a promotion. And the idea that seeing your boss smile is actually a very good career move and better in person. So now to talk about some office repurpose opportunities, did you want to talk about the I chart?
I'll just say, um, you know, a lot would go into identifying a building and what kind of repurposing it could have. And there'll be a lot of tests and hurdles to, not every building can turn itself into a different type of use. And there's going to be a lot of specifics analysis that goes through to understand what, something that exists today and the benefit of it being repurposed, the feasibility, both financially and to the marketplace, the scope, the costs and the alternative investments, so.
Yeah, and I think there's a real opportunity and in fact, a need going forward for those public private partnerships, because as policymakers and lawmakers, you have the ability to impact the process in a significant way. And we're going to talk in a second about some successful communities. But uh just doing what we've done all along will not get us to where we need to go in the future. Either way, okay, so some things that you could consider and uh keep in mind, this is free speech. So these are, these are sort of high level recommendations. But multifamily conversion uh is something that a lot of people are talking about of office buildings. But the thing to keep in mind is this thing called a floor plate. We design buildings based on what the need is. And so office buildings have a very deep floor plate, because that's what the need is. But multifamily, if you think about it, has a much narrower floor plate. They, you can turn office buildings into multifamily, but they're less efficient in terms of the uh, the actual number of units you can achieve in an office building. So it's not the panacea that that some had hoped. Creative mixed use options, which Aileen is certainly an expert at, and you've heard her mention some of those locations. Mixed use means putting multiple uses together in the same location. Uh suburban office with excess land, if you think of the northeastern United States, think of New Jersey, some of those big campuses that were built by technology companies, a lot of them are being knocked down right now. And they're building either planned unit development, uh single family detached, or some other type of mixed use community on the top of the building. And then in high rise mixed use and uh dense urban markets, um I think you're going to see all kinds of interesting thing happen, interesting things happen uh in those uh, the stacks of those office buildings or formerly office buildings. There'll be self storage, there'll be all kind, data center, there'll be all kinds of uses for that space if it gets to a low enough basis.
I was just going to mention one thing on the parking, just with this excess land, parking's becoming a real conversation because of the work from home policies and, you know, the cost of parking, the cost to build parking. The folks that don't want to pay for parking if they're only coming in two days a week. Uh the landlords that have underwritten parking for four per thousand of every thousand square feet of their office building. So that is a big multiplier, that's still yet to be seen where kind of that, what it kind of ends up being. But I think probably a lot of people come in front of you and you may have some parking discussions and what is needed. And the jury would certainly still be out on that.
More um conversion ideas, uh and not, not necessarily specific for any particular situation in Dunwoody, just, just idea starters. So we do see some office campus being converted to industrial, a very hot product type. And if you think of same day delivery issues, um you know, some of those office buildings in some communities are going to get knocked down. And if if you don't want industrial, you know, you got to kind of get ahead of that. The suburban campus, something called a metro burb. So what a metro burb is, is if you think about the uh su, a standard suburb anywhere in our community, think of some of the towns to the north here, and they've become much more dense and much more urban feeling. I don't want to say any specific cities now on the record, but you could think of them in your mind's eye, where a suburb has become the dense urban environment, so called metro burb transformation. And there, but there are a couple of examples, really beautiful things happening in North Atlanta along those lines. Life sciences continues to be very hot uh in San Diego, the market was on fire, it's calmed down a little bit. But life sciences uses require, there's a lot about life sciences, that's a whole separate presentation. They require a certain labor pool and they require a certain type of product, because you're either going to create the drug or you're going to have good manufacturing around that drug, but that's an opportunity. And then uh the high rise office to partial clinical. So the idea that a medical office building could actually be co mingled with an office building, something we didn't think about before. Difficult, probably separate elevator banks, because nobody wants to go in office and get an elevator with someone who's sick. But if you think, if you're thoughtful about that, sometimes those uses can be put together.
And now just suggestions for Dunwoody. I mean, we're on the bottom here, we've put in some, you know, options to think about how things, you know, some other uses, schools, experience center, senior living, multifamily, medical and public spaces. And clearly, some of these could be mixed together. And kind of being open to other uses is going to be an important part of a successful Dunwoody moving forward, while you rethink zoning, rethink traffic patterns. Um be proactive and don't ignore the problem, because it is real data that's coming out and, you know, leases rolling quarterly. Uh focus on that walkability and the urban design that you desire and lead with the place making so that there's, it continues to be a desirable place to come. Um and then obviously, there's capital stack considerations and incentives to make any opportunity uh work for the ownership.
And I would just add to that, um I was talking to Michael again earlier today. Uh if you, if you could get out as a, as a group and kick the can and sort of see what's going on, even in metro Atlanta, but certainly in some other communities around America, there's some great examples of people who've taken, taking a fairly obsolete area of office and converted it into something magical. So there is hope, there is opportunity, but uh no single landlord can solve this problem, it's going to require the community. So some examples of conversions.
Um these are specific examples in Atlanta. So eighteen oh one Peachtree was an office building, kind of north Buckhead, that converted directly to medical and has been kind of off the charts, doing great job with their leasing, with some renovations to their common areas. And a lot of these are operational changes um with waste removal and others moving and from an office to a medical. The Henry, which is at eleven hundred circle seventy five, was office. And they are successful because of the floor plate size um to convert to multifamily.
Aileen, when you say that's breaking ground, is it, is the building already exist?
I guess it was originally planned to be office and now is, is moving forward as multifamily. So it's, it's a new development.
It's a new building.
Yes.
Being built.
Yes.
So I'm looking at, yeah, okay, great, anyway, thanks.
Um Reserve at Bull Creek, this is similar, I mean, more product exists in, say, Alpharetta than Dunwoody. Think like three one hundred thousand square foot office campus surrounded by uh surface parking. They, they were successful in changing one building to a veterinarian hospital and the other two buildings went to a private school use. And then I think a lot of people are familiar with the North Atlanta High School, which was a Jamestown owned IBM building um that got converted into a much needed new high school.
So private school is a big deal in America, there are private uh companies that are looking to expand their school systems with good demographics. And the thing that's very appealing about office buildings is they can achieve the density and the parking that so many schools can only dream of before this, so that is definitely an alternative use for a community. And I think that concludes our presentation. I would just say that uh, as I said, there's a lot to love about central perimeter in general. And as you heard, I'm a Dunwoody resident, I love this town very much, lived here almost all of my life and and care about what happens here. But make no mistake, now is the time to pay attention. This is not what I would call an emergency, but it is, there's an urgent situation to pay attention to the housing stock in this community and an opportunity to make it better. Thank you.
I think we should hear from Ann next, if she has a presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you, Michael. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I brought also some, some data and some facts like Ken and Aileen to, to share with you. So as a point of introduction, my name is Ann Hamlin. I am the Executive Director of the Perimeter Community Improvement Districts. I'm also a Dunwoody resident, so thank you for, to all of you for your service and what you do for our community. One thing I wanted to focus on, I think Ken said, or Aileen, one of you said, get the notion of being proactive. And I think probably with all three of us, we don't, certainly don't want to be alarmist when we stand up here in front of you all, but we want to present you with the facts, you know, to not to be emotional, but to present you with the facts of what's going on on the ground and what we see anecdotally of what's happening. So quickly, I wanted to share with you what I passed out was the, is an economic impact analysis. The CID hired KB Advisory Group, formerly Ken Bleakley, to do a snapshot of what the CID area in Central Perimeter means to the local economy essentially. So I'm not going to run through all of this, but I want to, if you can kind of flip to the middle, I wanted to sort of give you the bottom line of, of what the business district means to this city. Now, of course, our borders of the CID are not exactly the same as maybe what Ken would refer to as all of Central Perimeter. But within the CID boundary, in both Fulton and DeKalb, we generated $10.5 million in, for 2022. Okay. And all, all of that is money that we're generating to put back into the community to partner with, with your city or the city of Sandy Springs or Brookhaven on projects. So that's all invested back and that's dollars that the cities do not have to spend. Directly, the area of, and in property taxes is that $9.5 million to the city of Dunwoody. So that's a pretty big chunk, you know, I, I have often heard the central perimeter area referred to as the golden goose. You know, and it behooves us all for the golden goose to be healthy and to be vibrant. So that the commercial district is paying its share of the property taxes so that those of us who live in the city can enjoy fairly low property taxes. That's, I think, one of the reasons we all enjoy living here. So I wanted you to keep in mind that when, you know, the real estate experts talk to you about what's happening with, that means that as these, these numbers start to decline, those are numbers that of course are going to decline, they're coming into the city. On the CID side, for the first time in my tenure there and for the first time in history, our numbers, our property tax revenues have started to decline on the Fulton County side. So on the Sandy Springs side of the line, for the first time in 2022, we saw the trend line starting to go down. And that was really by virtue of post-COVID, you know, so a few hotels specifically that are not, that are assessed, their assessed value is lower than it was previously. But I think that's definitely an alarming trend that we're seeing, that we're starting to keep an eye on. Okay. So I wanted to, I'm not going to belabor this, but one of the things in the back I wanted to talk about, we talked about the, in the last presentation, you heard a lot about office. And I want you to keep in mind that of all the square footage that is in the central perimeter area in the CID, 55% of our square footage is office. So 55% of the revenue that we get at the CID trickles to the city is coming from office specifically. You know, the others would be hotel and retail. So what happens next? One thing that Ken and Aileen did not mention, I'm surprised you guys didn't, is not only the effect of COVID on the office market, but of, on construction. That's one of the things that we focus a lot on. It's, it's not only people are not coming back into the office because of this post-COVID hybrid virtual work that we're living in, but it's also, I think we need to face the reality of what's happening. At a 285, 400, we have the largest construction project, public infrastructure project in the state happening right at our front door. It was supposed to be delivered in 2019. It is now scheduled for full project delivery in the first quarter of 2024. So the effects of COVID coupled with the fatigue that we are all facing and probably less this local community, but people who are living in other places coming to here, that is really, really starting to affect the market. So in the interim, what are we doing about it is the question. There's sort of the long-term decisions. But in the interim, the CID is funding a marketing study. One of the things that our board has directed us to do is to talk about the great things that are happening in central perimeter. Cause there, there are a lot of good things. There's the trail system that is being built out, different, a lot of that you're going to be talking about tonight. We have new retail, we have new hotels, new restaurants. There's a lot that's the things that happened post-COVID. So the CID has engaged Visual House, which is a firm out of Canada to do a big rebranding study for the entire market, which we're, you know, we're hoping that's going to be beneficial to the market and to try to get people back into the offices and realize all the exciting things that are going to be happening. We also participated in the Edge City Study, of course, that the city did and Michael led point on that. And we, we're hearing a lot of excitement out in the real estate community because of, you know, what the city put out there to say, this is our vision. This is our vision for the CID portion of the city of Dunwoody. That's already garnering a lot of excitement. So it's, that's good news that I think the city is already viewed as being proactive. There are a lot of communities that are not. But the greater universe seems to be kind of watching now to see, okay, the city finished the Edge City Study. We've got this big marketing and rebranding effort for the central perimeter district and now what's going to happen next. I also wanted to talk a little bit about some survey work that we did recently. And I'll have to come back to you because we're not finished with it yet. But the Perimeter Connects, which is our outreach arm, is sort of our, our transportation concierge. It's a free service that we offer to companies in the district. We've already got almost 1,500 survey responses to the survey work that we're doing right now. So just anecdotally, I wanted to share a little bit of that with you. Nobody's coming to work on Fridays. You probably already knew that, right? If you're here on Fridays, you can see that it's, that the track, it's easy to get around on Fridays. So Wednesday is the busiest day in the district in terms of traffic. We, we have gantry points where we can also measure with streetlight data, who's coming in and out of the market. So we're, we're trying to combine that with the survey data that we're doing. Wednesday is the busiest day, followed by Tuesdays and then Thursdays. Mondays and Friday is definitely the low activity day. We already talked about the occupancy rate being, at least in the CID, being 20% for office. And we're all think following the, the stories about the sublease market, the central perimeter is now, I think, the highest on the sublease market. Carvana, of course is gone. That's on the sublease market, Cox Automotive, which is technically over in the city of Brookhaven. It's important, I think, to understand though, that to the real estate community, they consider all of this just to be central perimeter. They don't see the municipal lines as much as we probably do. The good news is, thanks to, I think they were both Aileen's, two of the largest office leases last year, right? In metro Atlanta, happened here in central perimeter, both over at, at Campus 244, the old Gold Kiss site. That is really, really positive news. And of course, High Street, that's positive news. I think, you know, from now till probably this time next year, to probably first or second quarter of next year, the, the two big things, at least in our view at the CID, will be High Street kind of coming on board and actually opening and the Transform Interchange Project opening. Because I think those two things are going to be a big sign to sort of the, the greater market that we're, we're open. We're open, open for business. It's easy to get here. It's accessible. We have places to live and be entertained and all of that. So that's something that I know our Board of Directors is keeping a close eye on. Okay. The last thing I just wanted to mention was the Transit Orient Development Study that the CID is procuring right now. One of the, Ken said, we don't have a beach in metro Atlanta and we don't have a Belt Line here in perimeter. What we do have is MARTA stations. And so we always tell people that's our beachfront property in perimeter because they're just not going to be building a lot more heavy rail MARTA stations. And that's something that I would really encourage you to think of as an opportunity moving forward. We are working with the city and also with MARTA on creating a new vision for what the Dunwoody MARTA station could look like. The Dunwoody MARTA station was built in the mid 90s. It opened right before the Olympics. And it was built as like an end of the line suburban station with the big parking deck. And sort of the notion was that everybody would drive in from the suburbs and park there and then go into town and come back out in the afternoon. I think we all know that's not in reality how it has played out. And so that piece of infrastructure, like a lot of MARTA stations in their system, it's, it's time for a refresh. It's time for it to be opened up into the uses that are around it. So that's something the CID is partnering with MARTA on a study that we think is going to cost approximately $300,000 to, to re-envision what that station could look like in the future. So I, I think all of this, I'm happy to take any questions. But you know, all of the investments that the CID is making in partnership with you and MARTA and the private development community, none of it is enough, right? But all of it is needed because we've got to, to kind of weather this time and make perimeter, central perimeter a vibrant place. I keep hearing there's a flight to quality, a flight to energy, a flight to vibrancy, however you want to say it. And a lot of these big tenants, big office tenants are going to pick places that are vibrant and full of energy. So investing in trail projects, investing in the transit station and entertainment options, all of those things are helping.
Yes. I do, I need to end five chill. So we have about nine minutes for questions. And if someone that works for the city could go fix the log jam that's happening in the lobby, I don't know, who, Jay or somebody back there? Just to help people understand where they can pick up cars to speak and stuff like that. Thank you. All right, questions? I have one and it's really as much for Ken and Aileen as it is for you. So as we look at what the future is and we look at, so, so I would like to think we are being proactive. We've been working, talking about this, we're having this meeting. But I mean, we broke ground on our trail on Ashford Dunwoody like two weeks ago. But I'm curious, when you showed some of the slides with amenities, like tennis courts on top of parking garages and this kind of thing, what, whatever it was that was making the work, the space attractive. What, if you were us and you were prioritizing investments in perimeter, what is, what do you think our priorities should be? Like, just hand us a handful, please.
I've got a quick answer for that. Trails.
Right.
Number one, you know, the, the question that we get most of all is when is perimeter going to be connected to the Belt Line?
Okay.
And of course, that's the path 400 is marching.
Right.
Part of it is going to be built as we build out the 25, 400, but that's the question that we get. People want to be on foot or on a bicycle and be able to get from perimeter to Buckhead to Midtown to the Belt Line.
Right. And that's on our plan list, right? I mean.
And of course, now part of that is San, city of Sandy Springs. There's only so much that
Right.
you guys can control getting over there.
Right. Okay. Other suggestions, please?
I mean, I would just say, try to be thoughtful about design and push people that come with new plans to see what they've done about design and integration. If it's different age groups, different living styles, the park setting, instead of every building or development looking similar to what the other stock looks like. I think a lot of people are attracted to things that surprise and delight them. And being able to have things that look different than what you already have would be a great add.
Campus 244.
Yeah. But other things like that.
Right.
And I would say, Mayor, that tennis courts or the icing on top of the cake, or the cake.
Right.
And really, well, yeah, pickleball, pickleball.
Right, pickleball.
I think the question that I would ask if I were a city official is if there's a new development, how is it, what is the connectivity to the whole? And place making is fundamentally urban planning.
Right.
And I know you have plans, but as I said a minute ago, respectfully, I would suggest that you look at other communities in America. For example, when I say the word sea pines at Hilton Head, you probably have a certain image that comes to your mind. When I say Austin, Texas downtown Sixth Street, you probably have a certain image that comes to your mind and we could go on and on. What is the image that Dunwoody wants to be known for going forward? That's the question to me. What is the connectivity?
So just, I'll give you one second, Joe. So when you look at our Edge City Study, right, where we showed where we'd like to be 20 to 30, 30 years from now, or it's a 20 to 30 year plan, how do you suggest that we get there?
And okay, in terms of from, from here to there.
Right. Is it, is it a city? How do we get there?
Well, there's no silver bullet. You got, you got to fight each battle. But fundamentally, it comes with that strong vision of what is it going to look like? And then in its execution, when someone comes for you and they want to try to create a new development, how does it connect? Does that?
Yeah, that makes sense. Right.
Also a focus again on walkability.
Yeah.
And the walkability from site to site so that people can enjoy without getting back in their cars.
Right.
And clearly the suburban mall that grew the city around it creates a situation where a lot of people are tied to their vehicles and that's limiting. And, and you're seeing the urban core where there is walkability and the fact that you could be, you know, without a car and you could utilize MARTA and other modes of transportation. Definitely is a desirability of young millennials and digitals.
Thank you. Joe?
So this might also tie in with Richard, a question about creating this place making in our current built environment. Right now it's all privately owned land, right? Except for the roadways. What do you find as representing the property owners? Are you pro or con impact fees? Because we don't have any in Dunwoody now. So therefore we are, other communities, Sandy Springs has impact fees. So you build, guess what? They get to reinvest in the infrastructure around them to potentially create place making in the public realm. What are your thoughts on impact fees? Because it's talking about public, private partnership, what kind of private dollars can have skin in the game to help us with creating this place?
Well, I understand the question and just understand, if you would, how an office building works and that those taxes are passed along to the tenants. So it's really not the land owner, especially if it's a third party office building that's going to pay those. It's, it's, it's the tenants. And you know, if you, if you can support and you have an expert analyze this office rate as compared to competing communities and they're in balance, it probably comes out in the wash. You know, I'm, I'm never really in favor of taxes, but I wouldn't be opposed to that.
I just want to explore more public, private, you know, triple P opportunities. And let's, let's dovetail that about, how about donating easements? There's a trail plan that the PCID approved seven, eight years ago. And it talks about the private property owners contributing easements. Do you know how many owners have to date contributed easements? And do you, you know, right? So can we get some little help from your property owners on some easements, please?
Yeah. So no, you're right. I mean, that, that's part of what makes the math work, you know, because we, we live in a community where real estate is very expensive, you know, we're not in South Georgia where I grew up. It's very, very expensive here. I mean, I think that's one way that the CID can be helpful is because those are also our members. So of course, you know, we've helped with the perimeter mall easement for that trail. And as we're marching towards City Hall here along, you know, for the Ashford Dunwoody corridor, it's something we can definitely help to try to get things donated. And to the other question, you know, you asked what, what could you do? I would just say, you know, be open-minded because I think we're entering into unprecedented times and there really is no playbook. So whether it's impact fees or getting right of way donations or adaptive reuse, the next 12 to 24 months, I think are going to be very, very interesting. And I think the community is kind of at an inflection point in the business district. And so the good news is you will have a lot of tools at your disposal to, to help expedite some projects and get things done.
And I would just remind you, a lot of these owner, these property owners are in inflexible loans currently with the inflationary interest rates and they're having very challenging conversations on the daily. So probably donating land that is under a loan to their lender is probably a challenge for them. Many of them don't have caps on their interest rates on their loans. So they're kind of seeing a lot of the profitability evaporate.
I mean, we see the, the mall is retrofitting and doing build-in, right? But could somebody like that say, okay, we could donate an acre for a green? But could somebody like that say, okay, we could donate an acre for a green, for a, for a pocket park, right? What, what can we do? Yeah.
I know we're at time, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say thank you as a citizen. Some of this is hard to hear and it's hard to figure out. But I appreciate you taking, you know, taking up the, uh, opportunity now to take a look at it as opposed to five years from now.
So this is probably just the first discussion. Um, we have lots of work to do to understand and to begin envisioning what we did High Street. So we have a vision. It's how we market it. Um, we desperately want the four hundred and two eighty-five project to be finished. We think it's negatively impacting economic development. And when I mentioned that at the GDOT meeting recently, they were surprised. So, um, I didn't really understand that reaction, but, um, we look forward to further discussions on this. Um, we, we are here to assist if y'all need us, if you hear of something. Uh, we are ready to welcome new businesses. We are ready to, you know, put the weight of the city behind proposals and everything like that. Um, but we know we have, and I'm a little tired of unprecedented times, I can't lie. Um, but, um, we look forward to continuing this discussion and also being as proactive as possible. We've, I would say we've come a long way in place making with our public art, our trail groundbreaking finally. Um, and so we look forward to creating a much more welcoming space at perimeter. So thank y'all very much for your time.
Thank you.
And I believe I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Move by Rob, second by John, all in favor. I, all right, we, we're going to need like a five-minute break to the audience before we can start our next meeting.